They changed the setup.
It's filling it with that speaker thing?
Yeah, it's coming from the owl.
The owl.
But it had to continue more than I thought it could.
It's got too high.
It's pretty cool. It's got too high.
They work independently. Oh, cross that.
It's cross that.
I'm not looking at the owl right now.
We'll follow Sterling planning and zoning meeting for water. It's approximately six thirty one. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So any comments from John? So we need to go through a little minute. I read the minutes earlier today. I don't have any changes to make. Okay, so we need a motion to accept. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes every second. All second. All right. All in favor? Okay, correspondence to the head of the area. Unfined business. I don't believe there's any. New business. I think there's anything new. No, ZPO report. Let's go to that. Although it's pretty short. Pretty much, I guess, a small lot.
Yeah, the only thing that I noted was, John says that he's been receiving multiple questions about accessory dwelling units and driveway requirements. I wonder if he's talked to him about specifically what those questions are or is there anything that we would need to address? Like the, you know, for future, you know, if there's multiple questions on the same thing, does that mean we have something not clear enough? Or is there anything we can address? He doesn't say there is, but we need to talk to him about that.
Yeah.
There may be nothing, but yeah. Yeah, right, exactly. By way of further problem. If there's something that's not clear or written in.
Right, Mr. Chairman. The only one that I can, that I am aware of was a recent one that was almost an application to you guys regarding accessory dwelling. And that was a resident who was thinking, well, actually, it wasn't, it wasn't going to come to you. It was actually going to go as a variance to ZBA because somebody felt they needed a variance to the accessory dwelling unit regulation that had the maximum of a hundred square foot. Thousand square foot, sorry, maximum size. And, and after reviewing what they were really looking for, I think it was determined that they really didn't, they were on an eighty thousand, not a few thousand, but eighty acre parcel. So they were actually.
They fell into the four acre.
Right, they fell into the category where they could just be, they could add the unit and be considered a two family and not have to worry about being an accessory. They just assumed that it had to be an accessory unit and they couldn't add an addition and consider it. Because the addition they were adding, they wanted to add a half and a half. And so that didn't need the accessory unit. And they wanted the accessory unit to be larger than the thousand. So it wasn't, didn't fit that category. So I think that was one of the things, I think, that fell into that, one of those questions for them.
Were the regulations clear enough to make that?
Well, I think the, I think the issue was in regards to, it's not totally queer, clear, the regulations. Sorry. In regards to two families.
Yeah.
The regulations don't really tell you that two families are allowed. You kind of get to interpret it by definitions within the regulations.
Yeah, but isn't it saying two people on the ADU, only up to two people on the ADU?
Yeah.
That's all you're allowed.
Right, but I'm talking about just a two family residential structure.
Subdivision if it's separated.
Nothing, right, nothing to do with the subdivision. You can have a two family on a lot as long as you have four acres of land. You have to have four acres in order to have.
Four dwellings or connected?
Within the same dwelling.
Same dwelling.
Yeah.
As an ADU, yeah.
Well, it's not, wouldn't even be considered an ADU because it's not accessory. It would be basically considered a two family dwelling.
Yeah, two separate or, or is it going to be connected?
Connected. So it's two dwelling units within one structure.
All right. So let's, okay, audience comments? Okay.
She wanted me to make something up.
I'm sure she's considering.
Throw something out. So maybe other business subdivision regulation section eight.
Excuse me, the ZPO report?
You did that.
Just did that.
Is there a discussion?
You were asleep.
He did it.
We didn't want to wake you up.
Well, that's where the question came up without the ADU was under zoning.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's all right. All right, so we go to subdivision regulation section eight. Open space.
Not our most current track. Is it this? The one from May 19th, is that?
Yeah, that was the one that was emailed out to you guys.
Yeah, that's the most current one.
Everyone, yes. I believe on, after the, that meeting, the May 19th meeting, you guys requested word docs of both the subdivision and the zoning regs with the changes within them, just to be able to track changes. So I sent both to everyone. So that one is the one that has all the current, current changes within them. So as far as open space goes, there weren't any other proposed changes? And I think that one just had the, well, just had the changes to those two sections.
Eight point oh and eight point four?
Yes.
Yeah, those are the only two sections. That, yeah, the text amendment.
Correct. I think I may have a copy if someone doesn't have one.
There's some reason I can't find it. You just have it somewhere.
What, that one right there? Yeah, but that's it. Oh. Next to you, I can't do the position. So Jim, correct me, or not correct me if I'm wrong, but just verify that this is, this doesn't really change anything requirement wise. This just cleans up the previous language.
Right, I think what we were just trying to do was to change, right, because the question, what had come up in conversation was essentially whether or not, it wasn't clear based on how it was previously worded as to whether open space was required in every subdivision or not. Because the way, the way that currently read, if you read the first part of it, it just said open space may be required in every subdivision. It didn't say that open space was required in every subdivision. So what we did is basically flip flops the language. It didn't say it was required until you got to like section eight point four.
Yes, so it, right, which is at eight point oh, it should be clear right up front, which shall require dedication of open space.
Instead of saying it in the waiver section, basically saying that you can, you can't waive open space.
And then the.
Before you ask, you can't waive it.
Right.
And then this proposed text also clarifies that the fee in lieu of should be determined by the town, not by the applicant.
Right. Right. Right, basically, eight point four is the open space waivers. The commission shall require open space in all subdivisions or authorize a fee in lieu of open space for all subdivisions. Yes.
So which means, which, I like the way that's written because the applicant could request a fee in lieu of and then allow the commission the opportunity to accept that.
Correct.
Which I think is fair because then at least there's potential for an option for the applicant. As opposed to, you know, this is where you have to be, that's that. And that, that at least gives the applicant a path to request an alternative. Because some applications, some applicants may say, I'd rather just pay a fee to keep the land, I don't, etc. Or, or other applicants may say, I don't want to pay a fee. I'm happy with saying that, that's open space. We'll put a fence around it. We'll call it open space, whatever, I'm, I'm good with that. I just don't want to pay a fee. So, you know, you're going to get, it's going to be fifty fifty times each applicant. But at least this gives them a path to an option, even if it's not. But it's much more clear now, too, very, very clear. And I read the open space section in the POCD just to see if there was anything contrary in that. Seems to be in alignment. I didn't see any contradiction. I will see obviously.
I think the only thing that we were, that we were talking about in regards to the open space is, well, one, is whether or not the commission did want to require open space in every subdivision or if you wanted to limit it to subdivisions of more than a certain number of lots or a certain number of acreage. But also, I believe we also had a conversation in regards to, I'm trying to take a look here quickly, is, I don't know if you specify how the open space is to be granted. I remember having that conversation, like, is it, or the, the different methods of open space, whether it be through a land trust, whether it be just a conservation easement, where it's still owned by the private landowner, whether it be private dedication. So I do recall us having kind of that conversation in looking at how some of the other towns kind of spelled out, these are the different methods that you can use. Like, don't think the town specifically has or, or spells that out. Not that I guess you have to. It just says that fifteen percent of land.
So the way I, yeah, I had some notes from last month. Again, Jim, that, talking about that exactly. Yeah. So when I reread the POCD, you know, this past week, I thought, how does this, how does the intent of this land apply to this open space requirement? And it doesn't say, take this open space land and build a playground with it that's owned by the town. It's to preserve natural habitat and natural landscape. So to me, that open space is still owned by the applicant.
Protect, protect congestion.
It, it's not. Yes, right, right, reducing congestion, making habitat. Exactly, green, green space, basically, is what it describes. So to me, that's still owned by the applicant. It's not taking their land. It's just saying, let's just preserve this piece that keeps greenery. Because they may be doing the parking lot. They may be doing a parking garage, you know, and just cutting everything out. Or they could be putting in three houses, if, or four houses. And you, they're still going to have greenery. But maybe it's not an application that's just simple housing. Maybe it's something that's got acres of pavement. And in which case, you know, that greenery could be very important. But to me, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that the town, like, owns that land. I, I don't, I don't like, I, other, I think bigger towns, more, more urban towns do that because they want space to do things like public parks and public access areas. I, I, I don't think Sterling's looking to do that.
We're going to state, taking the rights of the land. Basically, you're not taking the ownership of the land. You're taking the ability of the owner of that land.
Well, it, it's removing their ability to develop that one piece of the property. That's it.
Correct.
It's, it's not saying they can't use it. It's not saying they can't, you know, cut a tree down, firewood. It's not saying they can't use their land. It's just saying they can't develop that part of it. They can't pave it with a building on it.
They're taking their development.
Right.
Just what you're all about.
From that part of whatever piece they want to have it.
Correct.
Is there any kind of compensation that the owners get?
No.
Taxes and dues?
They're, they're allowed to have a subdivision.
How many of you, minimum, that were doing open space toilet? I mean, if a guy's just splitting his land into two to put another house on, is that qualifying for open space? No, what, what is the?
Well, currently, it's any subdivision.
Any subdivision.
And.
Even for two lots?
If it's not a family subdivision.
Oh, it's not family.
Or a, you know what I mean? And that's why, that's what I mean by right now, it's, it's any subdivision. So if he's just splitting it into two lots and he, just because he wants to sell one lot, he technically, would it be required, in that particular instance, he'd have to do, in open space, he'd either have to give you a fee in lieu of or say, okay, if it's a two acres or whatever your minimum is, he'd have to do fifteen percent of it and say, okay, I'm doing a conservation easement on whatever fifteen percent of two acres is.
Would that change the side, minimum side of the lot to use that fifteen percent? Does that still count for the square footage?
It still counts for the minimum lot size, but it would, it wouldn't be able to be counted towards the minimum of the ball polygon.
Yeah, the polygon would have to be outside the open space.
Right.
So this is where it gets tough to write a fair regulation because you can have a two lot subdivision that's a hundred acres and then they have to have fifteen acres of open space for two lots. Or you could have a hundred acres divided into fifty lots that are two acres each, almost impossible to do that. But if you say around numbers, right, then, then they're putting aside fifteen acres, but they're getting, you know, thirty five, thirty eight, thirty nine, how, forty house lots, in which case it's worth it. So that, that's where it's like, how do you write a fair regulation for everybody? It's difficult. So it's almost like you have to have a, you have to have a standard and then you have to have an exception. Or a list of exceptions.
Exceptions, I agree with that.
I think, I think there should be something done for the guy who just wants to make one subdivision on this small. I mean, it's one thing if you've got a developer coming in with a hundred acres and make it fifty.
Right, no one feels bad for them, but that's not the case.
But the little guy, you know, should be some consideration to that, I think.
So we can keep it kind of how it's intended now at this point, which is any subdivision other than a family owned split. And then have a list of exceptions so we can work on coverage for what that is. And the exceptions could be, if it's under X number of acres, a two lot doesn't count. Or it could be under X number of acres. It can be up to this number of, yeah, that makes sense, parcels. Yeah. So we can figure out what those numbers are. Yeah. Yeah. And then we just have to scrutinize it as a group to make sure that we didn't just make a bunch of loopholes that everyone's going to try to get through.
It's very easy.
I, I have a question. The state sounds silly. Does all of this apply to the states' open spaces? Of the state's trying to accommodate? Two thousand, two hundred and seventy acres?
I mean.
Or seven, seven percent there? So these little, my new open spaces that we're talking about, is, is that considered part of that?
The state wants us to have apartment buildings on every parcel. So I don't understand why they won't.
It depends on which department of the state that. Um, yes, it would apply if the state knows about it. And that's where it becomes, and that's more of a situation where a lot of towns, you get situations where you're suddenly preserving little, small chunks of land all over the place that no one's going to actually know about in three years down the line. No one knows it's there and no one, because it's only mentioned in an easement that's in the town, on the site plan.
What about the properties that are listed under conservation priority?
You mean in your POCD?
Yeah.
Yeah. Honestly, we have to be positive.
Because those are, those are big properties that are still privately owned. So I, my question is, what does that mean exactly?
What, there, what, what you're looking for in regards to some of those, at least this is what I'm interpreting, is that you're looking for something larger than an acre and a half or you're looking for probably a, an agricultural or a state of Connecticut PBR type of, because some of those may be large forest tracts where the state of Connecticut may come in and through a program, provide a, usually it's the watershed preservation programs where they're trying to preserve large tracts of land to preserve water quality, that type of thing, where they may purchase the development rights of that large portion of the watershed. And it may be either the whole lot or it may be the whole lot accepting a certain building envelope.
The properties that are under conservation priority, that would be, they would be looked at.
And that would be as a, that would be something that probably either the town and the landowner together may have to apply for a grant or something like that or apply for a program through the state to, to see if the state would basically include that property within their program. Other ones, like the agricultural ones, which are purchase of development rights where usually it's a farmer with prime or important farmland soils will go to Department of Ag and they'll sell their development rights to the state.
So the, the person who owns the property, they're the ones that put it under conservation priority? Or the, the town?
With the town? Well, the town, the town, as they go through their POCD, I mean, they can, they can put anything on their map to say it's a priority to the town. Hopefully, they've done it through a public, kind of a public process where it's not just a select few people in the town who say, yes, we think that, and we think that is important, that it's kind of been publicly discussed. But it's, but it's not something.
It's confusing, I think, to people that you see these chunks that are privately owned that say.
Right, and they are, and that's where it gets tricky because it's.
I've seen some of the landowners, look at that.
Oh, yeah, and it's, and it's the same, it's a similar, and it's a similar situation with the towns, I guess, and when you look at the state. If you go look at the state plan of conservation and development, they have a mapping thing very similar. And the towns get very upset or the, the state has kind of tried to go get away a little bit more from emphasizing the mapping aspect of theirs only because, especially in our northeast corner, they would look at the map and then that would say, we need to preserve the whole town of Eastford. It's all in the watershed for romantic waterworks. Well, Eastford looks at it and says, well, we have taxes to pay and we have places that we want to develop. We have village areas, things like that. We don't think the whole town should be in preservation. But that's kind of how, when you're looking at it at that kind of a scale, that's just kind of how, and there's also already things developed in a lot of those places that they're saying should be preserved. So some of it's just the scale that you're looking at.
Sounds like a wish list.
Right, exactly. And it, it comes to a point where when you are looking at large parcels, hopefully, you can get those landowners in the conversations early and say, hey, at some point, and, and at this point, yeah, maybe they're like, no, we have no interest in, in, in selling that at all. I mean, Pomper ran into that situation when they, when they went out and were trying to conserve a lot of land in their towns. They had landowners who said, no, we don't want to, we don't want to. And they were large farm properties. And one of them recently just took half of it and put solar on half of the farm right adjacent to the Audubon land. So it's got all half solar on it. But it's not like, it's not something the town can force someone into just because it's in their POCD. It's just something that the town's saying, hey, this is, this is something we would like to do.
Does anybody know how we came up with the plan for, for these conservation properties? I think one or curious as to what the process was.
There was a committee. There was a committee.
Yeah, usually, usually it's either done directly with the planning and zoning commission or the town puts together a, it's kind of like a subcommittee. And usually the subcommittee is members of P and Z. It may have members of, if you had a conservation commission or, or a finance or you're in a wetlands commission and it has members of all those different groups. And they may hold periodic meetings. And then at the end of it, ultimately, it's the planning and zoning commission that has to hold the public hearing along with the board of selection holds their own public hearing. So between the two of them, those are the only. Um, so between the two of them, um, those are the only fully required public hearings. Um, but there are, a lot of towns hold informational public workshops throughout the process, um, to get public feedback.
I, I, I get that. I look at this thing and I, it's obvious, you know, people are very involved doing this, but Mike, I'm. I'm just curious and I wonder if anybody knows what the reasoning behind. Was, but why, I mean, if we're gonna act on doing stuff that's in this, I'd like to know why we're doing it before we do that. I don't wanna just say, oh, that, that property's.
Right.
You know, a target, let's, let's go after it. I'd like to, you know.
A lot of times when you're.
I, I know, I know, I don't mean it. I, I get it. That's bad language.
Right, when they're looking, when they're looking at open space.
I know, I know.
Designating open space when somebody is trying to.
I understand. I, I, yes, you're right. I should use more careful language. Absolutely.
I don't know if Sterling.
But my, but my point is, I would just like, I, I wonder if as they were doing this development, developing this land. Were they taking notes, were they saying why they're doing what they're doing as they were doing?
In the interim plan, well, they do talk about why they were doing.
Well, I mean, just even the details, like when the, when this, this map, for example, you know, and the different properties they chose for different purposes. Um, was there, what were the reasons why they, they chose the properties that they did to be in conservation? So, conservation priorities, you know, or development, or there was other things too. On here, I'm different from how many that I saw. I was wondering why, how, how they arrived at those decisions.
Could I just add something? Right now, as of July sixteenth, Connecticut. Uh, is allocating fourteen point three billion dollars state funding to help twenty two communities purchase or protect two thousand two hundred seventy acres of open space.
Yeah, so.
As of, as of, I had a goal of protecting six hundred and seventy three thousand acres. Of land as open space, both and some happen to be held by E E P. This just came out on July sixteenth. Uh, it doesn't affect us, but it does affect other towns like the London Legger. Uh, they name all the various towns that, you know.
I just, I just saw it right here.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a, it's a priority for the state.
Yeah.
Of course, it's always a, I don't wanna say it's a conflicting priority because it, it all depends because. Of course, when they're talking about housing and housing development, they all wanna push housing development, but they also wanna push housing development in areas that already have infrastructure. Um, and supporting infrastructure, that's kind of more of the priority than um, putting housing development out where there isn't infrastructure. They're, they're not, I mean, their smart growth. Policies are not necessarily to sprawl, uh, so. And it's balancing those two things. Are, is, is where it gets somewhat tricky, um. And especially in those rural towns or in our northeast corner where it's rural, um, where we kind of get caught up in the middle, where they're telling you, hey. You need to allow more, more development, but um. You don't necessarily have the infrastructure to allow that type of thing. But back to your earlier question, and one of the things that maybe um, I can take a look at is, and this would have happened back in two thousand, two thousand six. There was a lot of um, towns were working with a, a group called uh, the Green Valley Institute. And they would go out and do what they call co-occurring um, natural resource mapping. So what they would do is they would go out and map natural diversity database mapping, which there's probably a map in your P O C D of all those locations. They would map inland wetlands. Locations, they would match large forest tracts, um, they, they were mapped a bunch of different environmental. Categories, and then they would place all of those maps over each other. And once they've done that, they, that would identify kind of um, a bunch of different parcels. And they would give each one the uh, basically a score. And it would say, okay, maybe these parcels have higher scores than others. Um, so these may be more um, a more of a priority for conservation than um, this one that's over here. Um, and that would be just based on environmental characteristics, not so much based on um. Who may own it at the time or anything else. It will, uh, so a lot of towns participated in that program because. Uh, Green Valley Institute would provide that kind of information for free, um, some of that mapping for free. Um, whether or not Sterling has some of those maps, um, I don't know, but I could take a look and see. And that might be some of what kind of led to what some of, what those open space parcels were kind of picked, were picked by.
So the Green Valley Institute still has it?
No, because the Green Valley Institute was, I think, primarily a grant funded group, um, and they were dissolved. I wanna say back in. Maybe two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, um, some of the work that they've done, there are other groups, I mean, we've done some. Uh, uh, like Yukon Extension Center has probably done some of that type of mapping afterwards. Um, I believe the uh, Nature Conservancy has done some of that kind of mapping. Uh, it's not, it's not a difficult thing to do, um. But uh, that particular group, um, no longer exists.
Yeah, I'd be interested, you know, but not too hard to dig it up. I'd be interested to see if they get that information.
I think as far as all of this information applies to this commission. This commission is to take a document that's been prepared and just make sure that we are complying with it as we make any adjustments to. The regulations that are under our control. This is not under our control, that is. That has been completed by another group of people from the past, I imagine. I think there's a, there's another. Uh, update of this required by the state at some point in the future, and if there's any changes or updates to that, I would say. You know, be involved in that commission to understand that, but I have no idea what they get all. I know it's very comprehensive. And, and they spent years writing it, and at this point, I think we just need to comply with that, you know. Even if we don't understand it.
That's a, that's a law we have to report to town to, to get.
Well, technically.
All, all, all we're doing, it's very simple. All we're doing is if there is a, a subdivision application that comes in and it's in one of these. Conservation priority areas that we are probably not going to take a fee in lieu of when it comes to open space. It's going to be. That open space is gonna be designated and documented, that's it. It's as simple as that. A, a property that's subdivided, that's not uh, been designated as a priority area, that may be a fee in lieu of. And if the applicant requests it, then we can consider it. That, that's all we're doing. That's it. It, it's not, it doesn't make a big difference as, the open space is still required on any subdivision. Still required. It doesn't change any of that. It probably just takes our ability away to say, we'll accept a fee in lieu of, if requested by the applicant, if they're in the priority area. We, because we can't affect what the open space is or what they end up doing with it. We're just saying it's open space, it's not gonna be included in development, and when they review their site plans, there can't be any part of the development that's in that open space area.
If you look at the four, four districts and four districts. Under open space permitting, at that top hearing, talks a little bit about. What your question.
Oh, so, that, that's a good point, that's um. It's suggesting that this commission increase. The open space requirement from fifteen percent to twenty percent if it's in a conservation priority designated space. I don't know how, I don't know how, uh. It's a suggestion from this commission to enact legislation.
Right, that's, the P O C D, basically, when they put that together, it usually has a list of things. For multiple boards, because it is put together by multiple boards and by the town as a whole. It may have suggestions for changes to um, your zoning regulations, your inland weapons regulations, um. It could have suggestions for the assessor, for the tax people, or any.
All the other commissions.
Um, but uh, to go back a little bit, the P O C D is updated every ten years. That does not mean you can update, you guys can make changes, you can just look at it right now and say, hmm, we need to study. Open space a little bit more, and you guys could make changes to the P O C D at any time. You don't have to wait ten years. You can decide at any point. You have to go through the same public hearing process that you would with any other tax amendment. And probably go through like a, some kind of an informational. Thing and some kind of a workshop type thing, same as you would with the tax, tax amendment, but it doesn't have to be stagnant for ten years. Um, in fact, if you were doing something that would, that you wanted to do with your regulations, it would probably. Make sense that if you were doing something with your zoning regulations that was. You felt was contrary to the P O C D, that you may do. More uh, public input in regards to your P O C D and may have to amend your P O C D. To address that before you actually make that tax amendment. So currently, like, your regulation eight point one. It says everyone shall have, obviously, it says the maximum required area of open space shall be fifteen percent, and then it says it shall not be less than one acre. I mean, I would argue, I don't think you want one acre. Why would you want one acre of open space here and one acre of open space here? I mean, it just doesn't. What, an acre of open space just doesn't. To me, it's gonna be more of a hassle than it's going to be, because who's gonna monitor? And when you spoke in regards to. It's open space, we don't care what they do with it, it's just open space, yes and no, um. If you're saying that it's open space and you're requiring them to put a conservation easement on it, well, this board can. Determine what type of a conservation easement is it? Is it a conservation easement because it's um, important for. Natural, right, natural diversity, because it's been identified as being a place for a particular species? Is it important because of the certain type of forests and you think it should just be kept perfectly as it is that? Um, or is it just that maybe it's open space for hiking trails? So that easement particularly says that it can be maintained for um, hiking spit, hiking trails and passive recreation use, that type of thing. Um, so the, what kind of conservation easement that is actually allowed can be determined by this group. Not solely by this group, you may ask for recommendations from maybe inland wetlands if that, if it has a particular um, wetland application to it, or. Um, or selection or whatever, but.
More to talk about that than more about, because you are taking, it's, it's not just developed. Now, you're gonna allow people to be hiking on what is still this person's land. That, that just seems, like I said one time in the live, that we're stealing the land, well, it's, it's almost. It's script and ally, you know what I mean? And then we're not giving them any compensation for it, it's still paying taxes on that land, and we can't do anything with it, and people are coming on it, it's. It is their land and it's not, um, it just seems weird to me. You go down that, honestly.
That's one piece of it.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's basically a tax. When you want a subdivision, you pay a tax, you know, I don't like it either, obviously, but I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a better way.
That money then goes into a, a land purchase type of.
Right, right.
So the town can buy land if they ever wanted to.
Right, I agree with that.
Does that still matter? So what's the other way around? Then we need to review and draft. Coverage to explain, clarify. What type of conservation easement it is, habitat, forest, free, free space, public access, not public access. Do we, do we need to spell all that out more specifically?
I think it. If you think it's something that the, that you may do. I think it would be helpful.
Well, I think we have no choice, because, you know, when we, when we go back to the P O C D, it's, in some cases, it's going to be.
And I.
Basically required, so then what's the common, what that is now, so that, you know, the public has a chance to comment on it and then.
So it's the, that's another question. This only applies to if somebody wants to subdivide their property?
Yeah, open space is only something, um, that's part of a subdivision.
And if somebody's property is in conservation priority, if they wanted to sub, subdivide, that would be looked at all differently?
Means that that person would, instead of having, well, the person wouldn't have the option, the town wouldn't have the option normally. To either, they can have a fee in lieu of.
Right.
The open space, but again, on conservation, from what I understand here, correct me if I'm wrong. And what kind of conservation priority, they wouldn't have the fee in lieu of, it would just be open space period.
Okay, so I think that's where some of the confusion for the laypeople here, is that conservation priority makes it sound like that piece of land. Is wanted because it's a conservation priority, so any way we can, you know, conserve that property, so I, I think it's just. Again, uninformed people just.
It's only when it's.
When you want to subdivide it.
But that's texted. Well, yes and no. It is only when it's subdivided, but it's also if, I mean, if it, it depends on how aggressive the town is. I mean, it may have nothing to do with planning and zoning. It may be, maybe the town's looking at other grants where. As I mentioned previously, if the town's approaching the landowner and the landowner is interested and willing to. Put their property into, I think there's a program called Ten Mill Forest or something like that, or other types of forest programs. Where they're um, gonna conserve a large forest tract, um, for uh. But. Conservation purposes and in return, they get something um, from the state. Um, that may have nothing to do with planning and zoning, it may be something outside, but it might be something that in order to get to that grant process. It may need to be identified within the P O C D. But at one point in time, I think I did um pass out to you guys, and I do have some extra ones here. And this might be overkill, um, another town's example where they have.
The one that's listed uh.
Says have to eight open spaces in recreation areas. It was from the town of.
Yeah, Eastford, yeah, Eastford.
And they, I mean, you don't have to get as specific as they do. In every single category, but. But they do get into method of preservation, um. Whether the site has archaeological significance, alteration of open space.
Yeah, this was pretty well written.
That would have been attorney France wrote that one, I believe.
Anybody on the committee know if any deals had been struck by this commission or department of ag and Lincoln Cooper? About preserved properties or perceived properties that the town wanted to preserve? Just a question.
I mean, Link's not here, so I can ask it personally. And I think part of why Eastford is so extensive, their subdivision regulations are very extensive because they don't have zone.
Right.
But I mean, we could draft something. Or I could put something together that at least covers some of these things that we've discussed in regards to, um. The um. The dedication, and I don't know if you want me to touch anything in regards to the size or the um acreage. I know Eastford says theirs, I don't particularly like how they worded theirs, theirs is um anything four lots or greater. Four lots or greater than twenty acres. Um, the reason I don't like that it's greater than twenty acres is because that means that it could be a one lot subdivision, and if it's over twenty acres, they want open space. Just because it's twenty acres. Which I don't agree with. If you're just covering one lot.
That's how it is here now though, right?
Well, right now, it is, yes.
You know, it gets back to my point about writing exceptions, but that may be a way, you know, around it, don't have a. Don't have an acreage, just have a, just have a number, instead of having two, make it, make it four with no acreage limitation.
Well, we already have an acreage, which basically built in, two acres, a lot, right? So.
Well, right, yeah, exactly, it would be built in already, so if you just specify a number of lots and go to a minimum acreage, then you wouldn't be, um. You wouldn't be designating. You wouldn't be designating more open space property than.
But who designates fifteen percent right now?
Fifteen percent right now.
That's, that's the number that's, that's currently. Yes.
I mean, you also have, if you look, if you look at yours, yours has standards that say. The open space shall have access for a public property with such access at least fifty feet wide. And having a maximum greater fifteen percent.
Yeah, I don't like that.
Or shall but existing open space having such access.
I think that should be left open and we would determine whether or not we'd want it.
There, there was a two lot subdivision, I don't know, a couple of years ago. I don't even wanna say the name, but I believe that open space was like way out in the middle of the woods. Like right up against the town line, and there was no road access or anything, I mean, why? Because if you, as soon as you put road access on it, you just might have killed their entire.
Right, project.
Project, yeah.
And, and if we're just.
Two hundred, sort of, and fifty feet has to be open space, that's like.
And if we're just doing happy tax preserve anyway.
Right, no, it doesn't matter. Yeah, right, and it's just a green space on Forest Street, and that could be, yeah, definitely, yeah. I think we should have made that, I'm sure.
So the lot you're talking about, that's a, so a lot of things I have to cope with. You have to, that's the way you do, the way you have things written out, require all these little pieces of lots. Who in the knows that they exist? If someone was looking for that piece of land you were talking about, and was satisfied with it, is it possible that they could have it found?
I don't believe there's a comprehensive brand list of.
So.
What would be in these spaces?
Maybe a lot of this stuff is not very used yet. Good point, well, so, and then that lot, for example, somebody might sell that house. They probably don't know what they're, or it gets sold like two times.
Oh yeah, we're all gone, exactly, there's an evacuation.
Not done as easements on the D. So they would show up on the first, on the D.
Yeah, it would be recorded in property records, for sure.
Now, usually there would be, there'd be an easement that would be on the subdivision plan, shown on the subdivision plan, and usually the easement is filed with the D. But you're not wrong in the sense that unless somebody goes in and looks. Um, sometimes there's some, I mean, I think Woodstock's aggressive in this, where they require that the easement be placard. Every one hundred feet, that it either be placard on a tree or on a post, that there's a conservation easement. And it may have a insignia for the town.
They will trangle.
Right, conservation easement, blah, blah, blah.
Well, that's good, don't fall down.
Or the tree falls down.
But again, right, and then someone from, someone, right, somebody has to, and usually it ends up being, you guys don't have a conservation commission, but usually it's someone from the conservation commission. Who's got the job of every so many years going out and looking at all these individual um conservation areas, just then. Go and inspect them to see if they're okay. Exactly, so that's why I.
I think the goal in the town of Sterling is to help keep green buffer areas between developments, between houses, between businesses, between buildings. And it's just to create an overall. Space for trees to grow, a natural landscape to grow, that, I, I don't. How do, how do you manage it long term? Yes, it could be impossible, but it's like saying, let's not build cars anymore, because it's just gonna rot.
If I purchased that lot you're talking about, and it's up in the lottery now, and I went to get a building permit. For a house. Would it say anybody know that there's a um.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of reservation thing on there?
Yeah, yes.
They would review the D before they really issued the permit, somebody?
Yeah, there's a, there's a site plan recorded on record, and when the, before the zoning enforcement officer signs off as an administrative sign off saying, yes, you're good to go, that will have to be reviewed, like. Any site plan does. And then he'll say, oh yeah, you can't build that one.
And before you buy that property, you pour that property.
Well, you would know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, the problem when you lose the one of that property, whoever's want.
If there wasn't, maybe not.
By the way, I missed this, I think I leaked, so, so let's say someone bought the property prior to the P O C D ruling, making their property a conservation priority. Those people are out of money now, potentially.
There's no difference to your property right now, if you, you bought your property, if you wanted to subdivide your property right now.
Yeah.
There would be, because your property is a conservation priority, there would be fifteen percent of that property that you're subdividing.
Which is no different than any other property not on the list.
That works.
But the, the, the difference with your property and somebody else's property is that this board would have the option of. Having, have charged, either charge a fee in lieu of the fifty percent. Accepting a fee. Or, you know, or doing the, the open space, but in your case, in fact, that fee would not be, that's the difference.
All right, well, I've got some notes, I'm gonna do some homework. I'm gonna reread this Eastford one, and then I'll maybe suggest some burridge to you, or maybe you, you know, you just wanna take the reins, but. I wanna dig deeper, cause I, I don't have a real great understanding of how this is all administrated. Ross, I just wanna make sure we have it written correctly, not that you wouldn't have it written correctly, but. I don't think I understand it perfectly yet, but I'll get back to it.
Ross, in the past, when you had a subdivision, how do you determine?
In, so, in two, well, since this has been conservation, it's, it's been more or less. You can give us fifteen percent or you can pay the fee.
Yeah, it's described in here somewhere, it's like a.
Eight point three point one.
Yeah.
Like you look at eight point three point one.
I don't have that probably, but there's a formula like.
Yep, the same statute has the formula.
So it's not arbitrary, it's a real.
No, it's a real formula.
And if I remember, it's not.
It's like, right, it's like ten percent, it's not more than ten percent of the fair market value of the land prior to development. So raw land, you take the ten, you take ten percent of the market value of land before it's developed, and then you divide that by the number of lots. And then whatever that amount is, that is the fee, and that fee only has to be paid once the lot is sold. Unless the developer just wants to pay it all off at once. Which is, would be a nice thing, because I'm dealing right now in Eastford with lots that were done in. Two thousand, and I'm still trying to get the fee paid for.
So what happens in that case when I don't pay the fee? Does it mean, but I don't know.
No, it is, that's how the fee is done, basically, when they go and they, when the lot is subdivided, a lien is put on each individual lot. So that when the lot gets sold and they do their um deed research at the time of closing. That fee gets paid at the closing, potentially, either by the seller or the buyer, one or the other. Um, that's how it's supposed to happen.
That fee would be a really small amount per lot, and it's like, is he more?
Right, I think in this particular instance that I'm talking about, it was like six hundred and seventy-four dollars um per lot. Um, and two of them didn't get paid or something, so I'm still tracking down from the attorney, because they still have one.
Paid you more to track it.
Yeah.
So they, yeah, but even the attorneys, it's been so long that even the attorneys are kind of, so the last lot that finally sold, they double paid. Because they didn't even understand what the fee was, so I'm like, well, I'm gonna apply this to the one that you did pay for back then, and then there's still one outstanding. So they're like, oh, okay, well, we'll send you a check for that one, cause it just so happened that this. Was a, it was a bigger mess, and it was a foreclosed subdivision, where a bank took over the whole subdivision and developed it, so. Luckily, otherwise, I probably would never see these.
Let's move on. I think we do need to discuss it more. The issue of industrial.
That's it, industrial zone, so you all should have gotten a part of the, the covenants, the industrial park. That, you have a part of it?
Yes.
So, you probably haven't had a chance to read it yet, but it basically is really covers an awful lot, it's pretty extensive. And it, I mean, it's not perfect, but it was written as a, as a zone, as an industrial zone, but it never became an industrial zone. It's kind of weird, so basically, the E D C Economic Development Commission. Will review somebody who's buying a piece of property, but then it has to come before us. That is, that is a, you know, regular zoning type of application. And they have all of their setbacks and everything in this already, with, in all of performance signage, everything. Minimum lot size, everything's pretty well put in there.
So from nineteen eighty-five?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and it's been updated here and there, but for the most part, so we think a few words here and there, but it goes back quite a ways.
So we should take this and basically match the numbers to our industrial park zoning requirements. What industrial zone requirements? Well, we're going to be writing. Um, a new section for an industrial park zone that will be included in the zoning regulation.
Right, so, so right now, we have the, um. What is it, two acres only, but in here, it says a lot, sorry, it's only eight acres, you're actually up there for. Sorry to be a lot, some difference like that.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a. But most of the lots up there were more than two acres, five acres, ten acres, and there were big lots, they were not small. Although the, well, the proposed phase two, phase two, right now is gonna be put on.
That's basically what we're writing this for, it's for phase two, cause phase one, the lots are already there, and. We can say whatever size we want, it doesn't matter, the lot is already there, yeah.
But phase two still have been put on temporary hold, because we've got some, um. Some quotes doing the survey, and the quotes were extremely high.
Yeah.
So we just sort of hold, we don't have the time like.
Which, which is fine, it almost doesn't even matter with regard to this, because as a zoning commission, we still wanna do this, it does clean up some stuff and it makes something better, so.
And there's possibility of looking at grant money, and right now, that's probably the way we're gonna go. So for now, the two, two quotes we've got, we just two, like, wait, you know.
Four.
A rock.
What were they?
One was almost. So we have more time to write this, not pretty crazy, yeah. Um, so, you would take a look, um, you can look at the two that Jim gave us from Plainfield, I think it was, and, and then was it? Um, okay, and you'll see that this is a lot more extensive than those two. But they, they do have a couple of things in there, that include in this. And some of this, I don't know why, I've just never corrected, but. It's Economic Development Commission, but this teacher burned to Sterling Development Industrial Commission, so I gotta find out why that was never changed. And in here, it even says E D C, so I don't, I don't quite that. I don't know if anyone will know, I think some of the, we can include that architectural standards, I don't think we're, with that in town regulations, is that correct?
They wouldn't be considered standards per se, you could do guidelines.
I don't think we can take this and just go.
Right, I don't think you can just take it.
Smash on the title, yeah, no.
But there may be things, I, when I reviewed, when I looked at that, some of those things that they're calling architectural standards, some of them aren't really architectural. So, um, they could probably be placed elsewhere. Um, but it could also be put into a, like, uh, supplemental regulation. Um, similar to how you have earth excavation as a supplemental portion of your regulations, you could have something for the industrial. On zones, because the way, one of the things to also think about is, you're now thinking of adding a district. Right now, you are one big district. So if you're gonna create a district, and you're going to say that these uses in here. Are what is permitted in that district. Um, that means everything else is not. So does that mean these uses in here are not going to be allowed in what? Of course, in my mind, I'm already calling it, because most towns would call it the, the rural district. But I don't think we can call it the rural district, because it's not, I would just call it Sterling District.
Yeah.
Which is everywhere else.
Yeah.
So you'd have Sterling, and then you'd have industrial district.
So you're saying that what is allowed in the industrial park would not be allowed in the Sterling District?
Not necessarily, it could still be allowed, but there's still, there may be some uses that you. If, if the point is that you're creating this industrial park because that's where you want these things to go. Then why allow them to go outside of it?
It's, it's a good point, but if, if we, if we said that the uses that we designate for the industrial park will now not be allowed in the remaining. We would, that, that probably.
Right. Exactly, exactly, so, but those are the things that you have to think about are, how, how do you want that to, because now that you're gonna have two zones.
I think Sterling should be left alone right now.
Sterling, how do you want that to interact?
I think it should be left as it is, we should create a separate zone for the industrial park and re, the town, that's, that's my.
I, the only thing that I believe that you could.
I would agree, as long as, as long as you're creating something that's. Something's different about it, otherwise, what's the point?
Creating industrial zones here to help, so that they don't have to go by the town credits, that's why we're creating, as I understand, that's why we're creating industrial zone. To help that, to actually make it easier for them to do what they need to do with industrial zone, I don't think that should affect the rest of the town.
The only thing that we could remove, though, would be like heavy industrial. And you could make that your differentiator.
What would that affect in town now?
Not much, but it would be a differentiator, I guess, something, you couldn't do, uh.
Cause your big thing is, right, the big thing is the industrial park has sewer and water.
Right.
You don't have sewer and water everywhere else. Well, except for some spots, I guess, in the village, well, area.
Part of Trump Street.
Right, there are some.
I just think we need to be careful doing that, we need to be sure we're not gonna affect this, this is what's happening to some town.
Right, but, yeah, but there's no heavy industrial, there's no heavy manufacturing, there's no, um, power generation anywhere else in town.
What do you consider heavy industrial?
Uh, steel smelting, uh, iron production, I think. Big, dirty, heavy, commercial, heavy industri, not commercial, heavy industrial, using big manufacturing. Not indoor, light, light manufacturing is like indoors, machining, things like that, that's considered light, uh, light industrial. Things that have heavy traffic, big, heavy truck traffic. Machinery moving around on a site all day, the backup alarms going all day long, that's, that's heavy industrial. I don't think that's heavy industrial. I think that's light.
Is it, is it subjective?
There, there, there's designations for all this, I, I don't, I'm not making any of this up or writing that, yeah, it's, this, this is all like standard, uh, accepted urban that will be used. So when I say like heavy industrial, I'm saying, I don't think that affects anything else in town right now, I don't think anything will fall into that category. So if we limited that from the rest of the town and said that's only in the industrial park. I don't think that people will come out screaming, because I don't believe it affects anybody, but. But it would be a differentiator, cause like Jim says, what's the point of making another zone if there's no differentiation between. You know, just like a setback requirement by five feet.
The biggest one will be that there's no residential. Right.
Yeah.
Cause technically, there could be residential, you know, right now, I suppose. Right?
Right. Yeah, that's another, that's another differentiator, yeah, which will be, which will be good, cause phase two undecided yet, so.
And what I was gonna say, Ross, um, even though you currently cannot get a survey done, if they are interested. If anyone is interested in doing something in a draft G I S format, to just draw some lines on some parcels. With some topo, just to say. Hey, this is something that we could kind of make it look like. We could definitely help you out with that, um.
Good idea.
We did that with Platinum's tech park.
Thank you. I'll have to run for Sterling.
Why don't you get it cleared? We gotta get it, we gotta get it cleared before we do anything.
I know.
You can understand what I'm trying to say, because the surveyors will, you know, come in at two hundred thousand, it could be four hundred thousand, they gotta clear it themselves. And.
For what Jim's saying, you don't have to clear anything.
I'm just talking about drawing lines on this paper.
What Jim's saying.
Hypothetically, yeah.
But you still have to know where you're coming from, uh, up there, I mean, we, we do have a survey that was done years ago, from what I understand. They would be a lot smaller. Record for the whole lot, you know what I'm saying?
It would be.
We, we, I asked about it.
Big lots, though, they weren't two acres.
Yeah, we must have something to go by.
Yeah.
Right now, since we have a G I S on that as a whole, but nobody seemed to be able to help with anything there.
I've asked.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Topo map?
I mean, yeah, yeah, I just, I've asked, and other people have asked too, so. We just, I mean, unless Ross, you know of anything that.
I've seen it.
Have you seen anything?
I've seen it a long time ago.
Oh, yeah, it's.
So it's probably in the file cabinet somewhere.
So we had that back room over there.
Sure it is.
Yeah, so it must be covered with something, you know, that first, before we can go further, but as far as surveying it. I mean, I spoke to a couple of them, they said, oh, no, that, that's, we can't, we can't do an A one or A two, because we can't see our instruments. I mean, I'm, I'm going through the subdivision now, I know what it's like, cause I was out there with them.
Yeah.
Cut that branch, cut that tree.
Yeah.
I can't see my, you know, my instrument. If you want, if you want the A two done, it's gotta be done.
Yeah. All right, so the E D C is worried about survey, we don't have to worry about survey. So Jim needs some direction if he's gonna start drafting something. Uh, I like the Plainfield one, very short and simple, I think we could add some things to it, and then Town of Haddon had a couple. Good pieces that I like. If we're, if we're to use something as a starting point, I don't know if anyone read any of these, I mean, Town of Haddon was, yeah, quite short also. I think we, I, I like Plainfield as a starting point. I would adjust the, uh, permitted uses. To be, uh, more in line with, um, the E D C covenants. And Town of Haddon listed communication towers as a permitted use, which I think makes sense, because it's. Extremely high plane, we already have one up there now, yeah. Um, I don't know if we need to list cannabis, but we already had a cannabis facility, so why not have that be a permitted use? That would fall into two categories, growing and processing.
What happens down the line if we, somebody else. Wants to come in and doesn't quite fit in any of the categories that we define, where we have to go, and we, we think would be reasonable, we'll allow them to go, we, we have to, just change. Amendment.
Well, either they could come in to the tax amendment to allow it, or there's. There's language that you can put in that basically says that. Uses that are similar, or that the commission being similar.
Yeah. And you keep, you keep some of them, uh. It's not vague, but more open, like research laboratories. When you research, doesn't matter, if you're researching something, and it has equipment that's close to less than a lab, then it's a research lab, it's sort of. Storage and distribution of raw materials, that can be, that, that's a huge category of businesses, so. It's not specifically, Amazon warehouses are, are.
Right.
Well, my company's name is not Amazon, well, you're not a person, I mean, we, we try to list it as, um, and, and a lot of these are. Frequent with used terms and other, uh, many, uh, towns and districts. Manufacturing, processing, assembling of goods and materials. It's a very broad range of businesses, which, you know, lots of plain fields, you know, I like that, I like that type of verbiage. Cause the, the wise, the broad range of. Businesses who employ exactly what you described, trying to get somebody who doesn't fit into the one word zone there. And then in Town of Haddens, I like their performance standards. And the performance standards pertain to odors, gases, and noise, glare, and heat, vibration, those types of things. Uh, transmitting past their property lines. I, I think they have a. Uh, those are my thoughts, coming into the meeting tonight.
It covers a lot of the stuff that you thought that I have as well.
Yep, and then, yeah, I, I didn't have that exactly, Ross, I, I.
Odors, the whole thing.
I didn't plan far enough ahead to get the E D C covenants ahead of time to be able to read that, but this is.
They covered a lot.
There's a lot more text here, so. I don't know, I would, I would, uh, I would request Jim's expertise on what to use as a starting point. My thoughts were that I like plain fields, I like that one section from Haddon, and to me, that was a good starting point. But if Jim's drafting it, I would definitely trust his expertise to find a good starting point. Okay. Sounds pretty simple. All right, anything else, regulation priorities? Anything we need to deal with?
Um, I didn't have anything in particular, I just put that there because I know there was, um, you guys were working off of that list. If there was anything else, um.
Well, right now.
That you wanted to add, besides things that you're working on now, but.
I think we got enough right now, just that we're working on to add more. But there are a few other things for sure.
Is there anything else? Nope, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to your vote.
I'll say.
All in favor? All right. Thank you all.
You guys ever plan how we spot any penalties for any housing performance?
I don't.